Now, call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the August 18, 2025 City of Kalispell Council Meeting. Can I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Hunter?
Here.
Counselor Nunnally?
Here.
Counselor Carlson?
Here.
Counselor Gabrielle? Counselor Graham?
Here.
Counselor Dowd? Counselor Dahlman? Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Nunnally, can you wake up?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Your agenda in front of us, look to council for approval. Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Carlson. All in favor of the motion, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Let the record show that Mr. Dowd showed up at 7:01 PM.
As usual.
Consent agenda this evening, we have five items. The first item are the council minutes from the July 28th and August 4th meetings. The second item is award PFAS replacement wells, test wells project. This item considers awarding this project to RM Drilling and Well Service in the amount of $129,130. The third item is award wastewater treatment plant biosolids de-watering early work contract. This item considers authorizing Swank Enterprises to complete early work items needed for tight deadlines ahead of final design completion for this project. Item four is ordinance 1940, the second reading for the reserve at Johnson Ranch zoning and planned unit development overlay. This item considers zoning along the north side of Stillwater Road from suburban residential to urban residential. Initial zoning of R3 residential, RA1 residential apartment, and B1 neighborhood business with a PUD overlay to create a neighborhood business and high-density residential node and 91.8 acres. This property is at the northwest corner of Old Reserve Drive and Stillwater Road. It includes a property at 1053 Stillwater Road, none of which are owned by me or any of my family members. The fifth item is police officer confirmations for officers Josh Welchens, Jonah Quinn, Troy Haworth. This item considers confirming these officers who have met all the requirements and completed the one-year probationary period. Any public comment on any of the items on the consent agenda? Look to council for a motion. Mr. Nunnally?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Can I have a roll call vote?
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunnally?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
And Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Chief, Finesio? It's the safest room in Flathead County right now.
You can face the council there. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm privileged to be before you tonight yet again for confirmation of our latest three full-fledged members of the Kalispell Police Department. A quick update on our staffing. I'm happy to report for the first time in many years, the Kalispell Police Department is 100% staffed, both sworn and civilian personnel. So, thank you guys for all the effort that you put into that as well. And I know our team has been working really hard to train these folks and the officers have been appreciative of the extra manpower. So, it's a good update for our department there. So, these three officers, we have Officer Josh Welchens, Troy Haworth, and Jonah Quinn. All three of these officers have completed their one-year probationary period, their, whatever their designated time was at Montana Law Enforcement Academy, as well as their field training program. Officer Welchens, he came to us brand-new, he is the very last one to my left, to law enforcement. He's completed Montana Law Enforcement Academy, all 12 weeks, his field training program, and his one-year probation. From day one, Josh has shown growth, dedication, professionalism, and the character that it takes to be successful here in law enforcement in general, specifically at Kalispell and those values that we carry. Officer Troy Haworth, he's also new to law enforcement. He is first to my left here. He's a US Navy veteran. He graduated from the Montana Law Enforcement Full Academy, his FTO program, and his probationary year. We've seen discipline, leadership, reliability, as well as great teamwork out of Troy. And those will all be necessary for him to continue having success in this challenging profession. Officer Jonah Quinn in the middle, he came to us from the Stockton, California Police Department. He had five years in Stockton. He's a United States Marine Corps veteran. And he came back to Montana where he has some family roots, close, close to the area here. And Jonah brings valuable experience, different perspectives. He's a strong teammate. All those things will help him find success here in Kalispell. The three of these officers, they all have the character, the professionalism and integrity that we value here. And it's my recommendation that they be confirmed as police officers with the City of Kalispell. I'm gonna pull your badge off, Troy. Okay.
I'm gonna break the roll call. As I'm a mayor and I can do that, and you're out of position, you can do anybody. I'm a law computer in the Kalispell Police Department. I remind you, every time you get home, grab your shirts, you're home to family, okay? Family here, tell these guys in blue, it's us in the City of Kalispell. Private objective is to be back home. Sir, same you, you'll see you at home every night. Well, I don't want to see you. What embarrassing thing did I say? Now, I wanted to break the roll call. Chief?
Yep.
Okay with you? Was there a city manager's last meeting? Mr. Russell, did you put this down? Hidden badges on his own. How's that for a setup?
I wouldn't have prepped it and made it easy for him if I would have known.
Tough.
Good.
You've watched me do it for a number of years, Mr. Russell, so.
Yeah, the struggle every time you do it.
Troy Haworth here.
That's not your? There's no reason to.
It's crooked.
It's crooked.
Thank you, Mayor. And all three of these fine officers have prepared speeches for you. Start with.
Three-minute limit?
Yeah, with PowerPoint presentations also. Don't fight over it. Anybody's fine.
Just say.
I just wanted to thank, first, my wife, who's helped me through this whole process, has been there every step of the way. All the FTOs and all the officers at KPD with all my, helped me with all my many questions. And I look forward to serving the community at Kalispell Police Department.
I just want to say it's a huge honor to be a part of this department, to serve in the City of Kalispell. I just am very grateful and thankful for the trust that you guys have bestowed in us, our leadership, our department has bestowed in us. It really is a huge honor. And as Chief was saying, we recently went through the Police Academy. And there we had an opportunity to interact with and see other departments and the way they do things. And I truly believe after having interacted with dozens and dozens of other departments, that Kalispell Police Department is second to none. They really take care of their officers. And I believe that the officers really take care of the city. And I'm honored to be a part of this department. Very thankful for all of you. I'm thankful for the leadership, all the officers who have supported and mentored me through this whole process. And certainly, last but not least, my family who's supported me through this process as well. Being an officer is very stressful, sometimes off-duty as well as on-duty, and having their support when I'm off-duty as well has been huge. So, again, thank you to everyone here, to all the leadership, to all the officers. It is a huge honor to be on this team. Thank you very much.
Well, he stole what I was gonna say. But, again, thank you all for the vote of confidence, the support. It's an honor to be here. It's an honor to serve the community. So, thank you guys very much.
Now the unsavest room.
I'm still.
What are you saying there, Jed?
Chief is still here.
All right. No committee report this evening. So, at this point in time, I open the meeting for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Please step forward, state your name, and give the council your comments. Go be online. Close that. We're gonna move on to the first action item this evening. Selection of GMP consultants for city manager recruitment. This item considers entering into an agreement with GMP consultants for the recruitment of the city manager position. Mr. Russell, presentation?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, as we've discussed and has been alluded tonight, this is the final meeting for myself here. At the last meeting appointed Jared Nygren as interim city manager. And that all is kind of those steps leading to the overall search for the city manager. As through our discussions here, we've recommended using executive recruiting services. We've done that a couple of times with the same consultant for two successful fire chief recruitments. Through this process, we've had a limited solicitation where we had three direct nationwide firms, two local firms, and then two additional firms that have submitted materials as well after that limited solicitation. So, had a good representation to look through. And after going through that process, we'd recommend going with GMP consultants as the recruiting firm for the executive search. They are at a $19,500 base fee plus advertising and travel expenses. And I think they have a historical footprint within the region, obviously with Kalispell, that lends to, has led to, like I say, many successful searches in the region. But I think we'll see that as well within the City of Kalispell. So, with that, happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Any questions for staff? Is there any public comment related to selection of GMP consultants for city manager recruitment? Look to council for a motion. Mr. Dowd?
Your Honor, I move that the council enter into agreement with GMP consultants for the recruitment of the city manager position.
Second.
Second. Well, thank you, Mr. Nunnally. Any discussion on the motion? Have a roll call vote?
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunnally?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, Resolution 6276, impact fees, administrative fee removal. This resolution considers removing the 5% administrative charge for all impact fees to comply with the new state law. Mr. Russell, presentation?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, when we were considering update to the police and fire impact fees, we talked about this new legislation that occurred in the last session, basically requiring removal of administrative fees from the calculation of impact fee reports and ultimately what's being applied. We had that within the police and fire and the allowable calculation. There was no action taken on that. So, we still have that administrative fee that was initially composed. Kind of a challenging one because none of our fees are at the maximum allowable. However, we always had that 5% calculated into them. So theoretically, whatever they were reduced, still had that portion of impact fees in discussion. We thought it'd just be best to be completely, well, in the open, say we're just gonna remove that 5% so no one can question if there was any portion related to administrative fees going into any of the charges. So, this resolution just does a blanket 5% removal of that administrative fee from any type of calculation. And we'll apply that to all of our different impact fees that we have, be it water, sewer, stormwater, police and fire. We'll all see that reduction in that 5%. So, with that, happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, removing the 5% to administer, I don't wanna call it program, but to, for staff time, where does that get made up?
Well, so, and as I mentioned during the police and fire, you know, one of the things that we incorporate into the fee component was credit card fees. So, that will actually not be an option except for an additional charge. So, whatever that percentage was, you know, that we just basically incorporated into doing business, now it'll actually be tacked on. So, you know, that'll be anywhere from a 3% to 3.5% component through there. So, that will still impact if they choose to go by credit card.
Right.
Outside of that, it's, it's no different than, you know, reducing them by half. You know, where do you make it up? We added some into the capital fees, like on police and fire. There's no other alternative with that. So, it just doesn't.
So, when we dropped them initially, that, like you said, the 5% for staff time remained in there to go and take care of?
Well, you know, whether or not it was, again, it really wasn't the 5% that's calculated because if they were reduced, you're still looking at a less amount than would be in there. But, you know, historically, you get reports written out through there. If we have to do a modeling, you know, sometimes that'll be a portion of there. Obviously, the credit card fees were part of that within there. So, it's, you will have.
I'm just not, I'm just not really all that happy that they're going through and telling us that we can't go through and use some of that to pay for staff time because it does take time and they are paid by tax, taxes. So, I'm just trying to, that's the reason for my questioning, I guess, is.
Yeah, there's kind of a, and you'll, you'll hear this, not as a common theme, but other areas that seem to be counterintuitive to some of the goals that are trying to be achieved. And like I say, with this one, yeah, basically you're pushing some of those costs onto regular administrative activity that are being borne by taxpayers or by ratepayers, depending upon the fund itself.
Okay, that's right. That's kind of what I was thinking.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Your Honor. Did the state get rid of their administrative fees as they decided what to do for cities and counties?
I am not familiar with what administrative fees the state charges in any of their respective capacities. Obviously, if, I don't believe they have any impact fees at the state. That would be affected by their legislation. But I cannot tell you what other permit or application fees they have and how they've handled it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any public comment on Resolution 6276? Look to council for a motion. Mr. Hunter, you love impact fees. Come on! Dies for lack of emotion. Sorry, Mr. Russell.
Yeah, I'm gonna respectfully ask for reconsideration because it's his state law. Actually, you know what? Do what you want.
Mr. Dowd?
This hurts. Your Honor, I move Resolution Number 6276, a resolution adjusting the water sewer collection, sewer treatment, stormwater, police and fire impact fees to remove the 5% administrative fee pursuant to the recently enacted Senate Bill 133.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any discussion?
I will speak to my motion.
Oh, go ahead.
This is something that I have a lot of issues with the state about because they make us, they forced us with state code to implement and take care of the program for impact fees. And then they remove the ability to actually pay our staff out of that instead of having to pay it out of the general fund or your taxes. So, I don't like this. We don't have a choice. So, that's why I made the motion. But I did want to register my complaint.
About Mr. Hunter's?
Yeah, I think there's been disagreement for myself with much of the rest of the council on impact fees in the past. But in this sense, at least with Mr. Graham and Mr. Dowd, we're in agreement. I think that, you know, the impact fees should cover, should include administrative costs. It just makes sense. I understand the intent of doing this by the state legislature. Similar motivation to the motivation members of council to reduce the impact fees. But I disagree with it and I will support it because we have to under state law. But I disagree with it. I would not do it if we weren't required to.
Mr. Graham?
Just out of curiosity, I just don't know what, what happens if we don't pass it.
The Attorney General have to deal with something in the state versus something, you know, out of state.
You would be subject to liability from anyone that has charged the fee.
Yeah.
Without a reduction.
Lot, subject to liability by anybody who's charged.
Have to refund them the 5% fee.
Oh, I see. Got it.
Plus pain and suffering.
Any other discussion? I'll just make the general comment. You know, once again, the legislature goes off the rails and does their stupid stuff without even consulting municipalities, what it takes to implement things they put into state law. Seen it been interesting if they'd asked how many cities actually charge 100% of the allowable impact fee. And to me, there should have been an exception. If you've granted a reduction in your impact fees from what's allowable, you can still collect some of your administrative fee. But to me, this is just, once again, it is the bloated government under the Greg Gianforte administration wanting to make Montana's state-level government bigger, telling every municipality what they can and can't do, taking the power out of the elected officials closest to the people and giving it to King Greg. I'm not sure how I'm voting yet, so I'm gonna call for a roll call vote.
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunnally?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
No.
Mayor Johnson?
No. Make that capital N, capital O, send it to Greg that I voted no. Resolution passed though, fortunately. We're gonna move on to the third item, which is Resolution 6277, Budget Business Improvement District Work Plan and Budget. This resolution approves the annual work plan and budget for the BID for the fiscal year 2026. Mr. Russell, can I have a presentation?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we're now starting our series of resolutions on the budget. Start with the first two for our business improvement districts that approve the budget and work plan. Come back later and hit the appropriations as it's related to the levy for those. Really, this just authorizes what we have in accordance with state law for the budgeting and then also the appropriations and the two different resolutions for each of those. But the first one before you is Resolution 6277, approving the budget and work plan of the Business Improvement District.
Questions for staff? Do we charge them an administrative fee on the BID, Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Or do they charge? We do, okay. We're not subsidizing. Okay. Any other questions for staff? Any public comment on Resolution 6277? Of motion? Mr. Hunter?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 6277, Resolution approving the budget and work plan for the fiscal year 2025 through 2026 for the Kalispell Business Improvement District as recommended by its Board of Directors.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any discussion on the motion? Have a roll call vote?
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunnally?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, Resolution 6278, Budget Tourism Business Improvement District Work Plan and Budget. This resolution approves the annual work plan and budget for the TBID for fiscal year 2026. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, same thing, but for the tourism budget improvement, or Tourism Business Improvement District.
Questions for staff? I already know my answer. Public comment? Motion? Ms. Carlson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move Resolution Number 6278, a resolution approving the work plan and budget for the fiscal year 2025, 2026 for the Kalispell Tourism Business Improvement District as recommended by its Board of Directors.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Nunnally. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote?
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunnally?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, Resolution 6279, Emergency Responder Levy Adjustment. This resolution converts this levy from the voter-approved mill, mill value to a dollar-based value to comply with new state law. Once again, Mr. Russell, staff presentation?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, this is a new one. Normally, we don't have this resolution in here, but there was a change in legislation. And, yeah. Unfortunately, again, there's a lot related to this legislation that really is gonna create problems statewide. First one we're gonna deal with is the Emergency Responder Levy. They changed taxing formulas that had a significant impact on taxable values. So, just for example, the market value for Kalispell went up 24% for this year from last year. Taxable value went down 2.5% because they lowered the rates of Class 4 residential. Now, the majority of Kalispell is, in their Class 4 residential, are gonna be those homes between $400,000 and $1.5 million. And those are the class rates that they lowered. So, that lowered the taxable value by that significant component. So, to change that up, one, we, and we had, there were actually bills that wanted to remove voted levies in totality during the last session. But what they did is kind of had a little bit of a workaround. In with this legislation, knowing that there'd be impacts, they're giving you two options. You can keep it with the voted-upon levies and go back to what you assessed last year, same number of mills, or, or the dollar amount that was generated by those levies. And you can assess that for 2026, so it keeps it flat. Otherwise, it would go down because the value of the mill went down. Or you convert it to dollars, which still keeps it flat. So, they're basically taking a year of growth off that levy either way. But if you go to dollars, then you go with the rate of inflation. with the rate of inflation, which will shift to um, the average of the three years up to four percent. So it's not one half the rate of inflation anymore. It'll be up to four percent based upon the three-year average. Now, most jurisdictions are gonna be in the same situation we are because where the tax rate increased would be in those homes that are above one and a half million dollars if they are short-term rental or secondary homes. Not gonna have that in Kalispell, um, so you're kinda looking at where it's at. Now, you can stick with the mills because you may have an advantage. However, next year, they're going to lower the rate again. It'll be from one point ten to point nine. So there's gonna be a significant decrease again in the value of the mill, more than likely next year. So to avoid getting hit, really, it won't even stay flat. It'll actually be a decrease in the amount that levy has. The flip side is to go to the dollar amount and then just take that rate of inflation, which again, neither of these is what the voters approved. You know, this is not part of the discussion trying to cover a whiplash. This avenue would probably have the best short-term and even for in a very extended period, the best outcome that we would anticipate. Now, you won't know that until you see the values on an annual basis, but we know there's not gonna be another reappraisal next year. So you're definitely avoiding that hit and having one year of growth of inflation, and then they'll just continue to carry on as we keep moving forward in that. So we are required to pass a resolution choosing one or the other. Our recommendation is to go to the dollar amount, um, and then we'll start carrying it forward. Now, one thing it does is it completely, you know, last year, we kinda separated everything out. I went to find detail talking about the permissive medical levy versus the voted upon mills. That, that's just that, that goes away. All the transparency council put forward with that is removed. You can still track things and we'll still track what goes to the permanent medical levy and what goes to uh, the emergency responder levy, but because of the change by a state legislature, you're not gonna have that ease of tracking it from year to year that we had set everything up to be. So I say, in the end, you know, we're basically staying flat for this year in terms of the revenue growth, but in future years, that'll go not by the value of the mill, but by inflationary increase. So happy to answer any questions and when we get to our general levy, I'll talk a little bit more about how that impacts the general levy and the housing market because there's gonna be some unforeseen circumstances related to that. But this is the uh, resolution for you for the emergency responder levy complying with state law.
Any questions for staff? Any public comment? Anything, Indy?
I can't even say what I think.
Okay, I'm trying to hold back, so.
Yeah, being here.
Look to council for a motion. You sure?
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Nunnally.
Move to approve resolution six-two-seven-nine, a resolution establishing the method of levying voted mills as required by law, twenty twenty-five, chapters six-seven-four and seven-six-seven, passed in the sixty-ninth Montana legislative session.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any discussion? Mr. Graham?
I'd like to put an asterisk next to this resolution so later on down the road, when things start to possibly go awry with our levy, we can look back and maybe see that maybe this is the point in time where we, we spent a lot of time, staff spent a lot of time thinking about the best way to go through and do this.
Right.
And put a lot of time into, you know, the actual marketing of the levy and everything, and it was voted that way. So they're like a bowl in a china closet.
My question, yeah, Mr. Dowd, I got discussion item, but this will be entertaining. Go ahead.
Uh, so the, the big problem that I have with this is that um, I'd like some of our legislators to read the Montana constitution and count how many times it says that they will execute the will of the people. The will of the people trumps the will of the legislature every single time. We are going back now because of something the legislature did and we're changing what the people voted for and approved. And th- th- this is like sacrilegious to me that um, that this could happen, and I don't know how this passed without anybody realizing that and, and you know, at least bringing a little bit of a stink. I, I, I don't know a single legislator that did. So anyway, that's my two cents on this and uh, I'll give it back to whoever's next.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, your honor. Montana Association of Cities, was there a challenge of this? And if so, what happened? Was there any legal challenge to this?
I'm not aware of any legal challenge that's been presented.
You, you have to also like take into account when it was passed because I think it was right at the end of the session when there was no time to do anything.
No, there was opposition to changes put forward. In fact, throughout the session, they said, you're trying to change a fundamentally flawed system in terms of our tax structure. And I, I think the realization of that will come, that there just needs to be a fundamental change in that very foundation versus trying to take what you have, modify it and adapt it, and unfortunately, and we're left with where we're at.
Mr. Nunnally?
If this were to die, much like what, what Chad said earlier, where would that land us?
Well, I think it would probably just default to where we'd have to go with the mill amount, which I would ask you not to do because I think that would be further problematic.
Okay.
Um, theoretically, you're supposed to pass something.
Correct.
Um, whether or not in action, I think logically, it would lead us to the point of this. Now, some could maybe argue that there is no levy if there's not this passed. Um, I just, I think for the betterment of the situation we're at, we not test those waters?
Yeah.
For discussion purposes, one of the things we often talk about are things that we're forced to do by a legislature, a faceless beast that roams around us in this valley and goes and causes damage twice a year, twice every two years. I've threatened to do it in the past. Maybe this is the time, a second whereas. Because we had the first whereas laws, twenty twenty-five, chapter six-seven-four, seven-sixty-seven. When we added whereas in here, these are the local legislators who voted for this. And insert the names of the legislators in the House and the Senate, and then the name of the governor who signed it into law, forcing us to do this garbage because they don't know who to, how to do their damn jobs.
Is that a motion?
Second.
Second.
Aye.
How hard is that to insert? And is that a big deal?
Why not?
I know our city attorney is sitting over cringing. She's like, I can't wait for the mayor to be done. It's only four months.
So my non-legal opinion, um, you establish the whereas is in a method to create the foundation of legal components. Don't know if that does any more to that foundation and it's already written in there from the law standpoint.
Also, don't think the public reads the, uh, whereas is to where it would have any impact.
Your recitals are to set up your legal action. So they're your facts and they're the law in which you're basing it.
Yep.
Are the facts of the people?
And you are welcome to set up what facts you would like to set up. And is it a big deal to add it? We can add it.
So I had a motion. Had, did you have a second?
So I asked if, if you were making the motion.
Discussion on the motion to amend, add a second whereas, naming the village idiots that went down there and did this to us.
I support the sentiment, not the action.
Hmm?
I support the sentiment, not the action.
I would say that even if it's not in the whereas section, it could be somewhere in the resolution.
It's part of the facts.
If you're gonna put it in, I would suggest it be a recital.
A what?
A reci- the, the whereas, those are called recitals. So that's where I would suggest it go.
I, 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 you know, it's, it's, it's not a joke. I mean, I, 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 it's not a joke. I mean, I look at it and I'm like, this is why we're at the position that we're at.
Go pull our resolution. This is why it happened.
I say we make a statement.
Mr. Dowd?
So either, uh, just, just to plain, in the case anybody online or watches this later isn't following this, this is weakening and lowering the value of the levy that the people here passed, whichever bad choice we make. One of them's probably worse than the other choice, but they're both bad choices. Um, so I just wanted to make sure that anybody that was either watching tonight or watching online later understands why we're having a heart, heartburn with this because the emergency responder levy was well thought out, very well worded. Everybody understood what was going on, and now we're changing that after the fact, after they already voted and passed it.
That's right.
So that, that's why we're having so much problem with this because we have, uh, you know, staff, uh, you know, police and fire and firehouses and equipment that, that is based on this, and now they have lowered what we can do with that, which is not something that people approved. Now, they approved something else earlier.
Speaking of the amendment?
Agreeing with that, sorry, Mr. Hunter, what was the percentage that that was passed by our local voters? Somebody remind me?
I, I do not have.
It, it, it passed.
It was.
Well, more than it needed.
Majority. It wouldn't have passed without the flight of delegation saying, oh, let's jump on board. Mr. Hunter?
My recommendation, rather than putting in the whereas is which I, I think, again, nobody looks at or reads, uh, beyond the attorneys, uh, is draft a letter to these legislators expressing our opposition, the impact it's having on the city, um, and send it to them and also publish it publicly, or send it to the press. I think that'd probably get more attention.
I would go, I'd go, it gets more attention if they see it in a resolution.
Makes a statement.
Yeah.
I, a letter to them? You kidding me? I don't know if they can read.
Can't read the constitution.
So we have motion second. Any more discussion on the amendment? Have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Counselor Hunter?
No.
Counselor Nunnally?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye. Motion carries. We're back to the original motion.
Can I just add something really quick, mayor? So, um, what you've done here is your actual action. This is how we memorialize it in writing, so we're gonna work on a draft with that addition, and it'll be in front of you for your signature probably tomorrow.
Okay.
And this passes.
Can we table this motion?
Till the end of the meeting.
Like, yeah, after.
Be Thursday morning. Thursday morning, six AM, it'll be ready.
Good luck, Jared.
So back to the original motion. Any other discussion?
Can we pass the original motion without the actual language of the resolution is my question?
Yeah, we've done it before. Um, you know, it doesn't change the fundamental action we're looking at.
Okay.
You know, that, that is.
Just my question.
You know, there'll be times where we bring things back for like a third reading. That's when the fundamental action has changed versus, you know, some further foundation.
Okay, back to the original. Any last discussion? Okay. The only thing I'm gonna say is, you know, even though I give them a bad time, there's a southern colloquialism that I think is appropriate here. Bless their little hearts. They tried. Can have a roll call vote?
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunnally?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
No.
Mayor Johnson?
Because of the amendment, aye. Next item, resolution sixty-two eighty, budget mill levy. This resolution sets the annual mill levy for the city of Kalispell for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Mr. Russell, presentation?
Yeah, mayor and council, um, you know, how we set our taxation is based off the previous year's value, and then we convert that into mills. Um, so everything I just talked about, it still holds true, but what it means when your value of the mill goes down, you levy more mills, uh, just to cover that same amount and whatever else you have within that. So that's kind of what you're probably gonna be seeing across the state, other than unless those jurisdictions, and the idea was that this would be a tax neutral shift. The value of our mill went down so significantly, that means that shift is occurring somewhere else in the county, maybe along lake shores perhaps, where the value is going to increase on those homes. But we're within the taxing jurisdiction, so someone else is going to pick up that decrease that happened to the residential properties, and that will be in those that are outside the class, uh, four residential properties. So I just put that forward and that, and I said this at the beginning of the year, beginning of the budget season, is I have no idea what this is gonna do to people's tax bills. Still don't, because everyone's gonna be in a different situation with the appraisal and then this shift in there. I fear that a lot of businesses are gonna get hit with increases because they're not part of class four residential. Do not know what that amount is gonna be. Um, so I, I just put that out because you guys may end up getting questions on something that is very difficult to forecast of how this is all going to shake out, uh, in the long run. As it comes to, uh, the matter before you, you know, it's fairly simple. It's the same process we do every year. Um, we kept it under one mill and, under, under the cap, just as kind of a, a, a statement that we've tried to do before, and we've had variances from one mill to four mills to even more in some years. Um, so kinda still at that same base. Um, you know, we're still at twenty percent reserve amount, or like twenty point two, so we're right at that point. We also, and this is more in the appropriations, but just to kind of where it all laid out, um, you know, we had discussions on funding of the new shop complex and central garage, and we just did not have revenue sources for that. Um, what we did include with any of that carryover was a dedicated uh, reserve for capital, um, within the general fund budget of six hundred thousand dollars to help start that fund. That is not an appropriation. It's just, you know, reserved for future capital. Probably be a work session on that again within the next month or two. Um, your interim manager's already brought out an idea of a funding source for that with a distribution out of our tax levies. So you make a certain distribution, they'd go to the three taxing entities, basically the general fund, and maybe all to use some of that. More to come on that later, but I just wanna highlight in terms of, uh, the mill levy and our appropriations, that we do have that amount set aside to start that discussion because that is a need that is going to continue on. So with all those aside, um, you do have the mill levy authorization before council, and I'm happy to answer any further questions that you may have.
Questions for staff? Question, Mr. Russell, what is seventy-one thousand is the value per mill now?
Yeah, a little bit over seventy-one.
You were higher than that last year.
Yeah, I agree with on seventy-six.
Right. Okay. Any other questions for staff? Any public comments? Motion? Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, your honor. I move we adopt resolution number sixty-two eighty, a resolution making the annual tax levies for the city of Kalispell, Montana for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Discussion on the motion? Mr. Dowd?
So we, we talk about the mills that sit on our shelf. Um, we, that discussions come up every, every year. Um, this leaves one on the shelf, I believe.
Yep.
And last year, we had ten on the shelf. Um, so the adjustment is, one, one of the things is har- very hard for this council to do. We set the budget earlier in work sessions, or at least the preliminary budget. We're doing the actual budget tonight. Um, we don't know what the valuation of the mill is going to be when we do those work sessions and we. Um, we don't know what the valuation of the mill is going to be when we do those work sessions and we build our budget. Now that we've been through that whole process and now we know what the valuation of the bill is. Um, if we wanted to keep everything. Exactly the same as we have it called out in our budget, we would do this and keep one mill on the shelf and tax the rest. Um, I would like to see us reduce this even a little bit more, even if it does. Go into our reserve a little bit, just to make sure that, you know. I, I, I just don't like the trend and I, I bet you all of the other top, uh, class, uh, or class one cities in, in Montana. Are gonna be maxing out their, their levies. Kalispell has historically been the most fiscally responsible, um, council that I know of in the state anyway. As far as what we tax, I, I would like to see us come down. Four more mills and put four more on the shelf. I think we can be creative next year and, and, and figure that out. Uh, but, you know, I, initially I was gonna go, although, no, let's go back to ten on the shelf like we did before. That causes a problem for us in the coming year, but I think we can go down four. Um, I'd like to hear what the rest of the council has to think about that, has to say about that. Mister Fisher?
Reserves are allowed up to thirty-three percent, correct?
Well, we go by our policy, so we have a twenty percent policy that this council has passed to try to meet.
Okay, but state law, which supersedes everything, is thirty-three percent. We have maintained at nineteen point seven to twenty-one percent roughly.
Yeah, we shoot for that twenty percent, cause our policy says anything over twenty percent, we'll try to spend down through various means, either through. Projects to get there or through a reduction of levy, hence we are one mill below the levy. You know, one of the challenges that we faced from the preliminary budget to this one. Is, is facing the same impact in that reduction in class four residential, cause that's where a lot of our new taxable growth is. However, if they've decreased that tax rate. You, you know, we, this is probably one of the lowest growth numbers I've seen in a long time. When we do that preliminary budget, we go on a historical trend, that if changes in tax law had not shifted. You wouldn't be looking at that same, you, you'd have a little bit more flexibility in terms of where that budget number's at. And again, it's, it's council's policy and what you wanna do with it. But that's one of those things that impacted us from that preliminary budget is the growth numbers weren't as strong. A- and it's easy to say, probably in part because of that shift in tax policy.
You're, you're making a motion to amend or you're just?
I, I, I wanted to hear from the council first before I made it actual.
I just wanna make sure it wasn't a motion.
No, it was not a motion, okay.
Nah, there's no motion, nah, I don't need to. I, I, I guess what I'm, uh, to what he's talking about. Over the last couple of years gone through and heard how, you know, legislature going through and. Attacking the idea of having mills on the shelf. That we can't do that anymore. And seems like every year they get closer and closer to doing something about that, I look at going through and, and placing. You know, mills on the shelf as being fiscally responsible, you know, uh, that they're there. Should you need them, you can pull them out later on at a subsequent, you know, uh, budget. In sub- subsequent years, you can go back and get them, but it's not like you're just. Taxing just to tax just to get them because you can get them, so. Because they're going through, am I, am I wrong, or ha- has there been efforts to go through and pull that out?
Um, that was a concern as some legislation went through this year, is that you would not have access to any levies that were in the cupboard. So that was a definitive part, I can't tell you what bills that was in response to, but.
I, I remember, and it's been several years in the making too, I think, cause I don't think we just talked about it last year, but. I don't, I just look at it as, um, if we don't do, aside from how growth has been. Based off of the tac- taxation valuation and everything and actual, probably actual growth. Um, not doing it the way we're doing it, we may end up losing those next year.
I, I, I'm actually okay with that, but, uh, tha- tha- that's why I wanted to hear from the council.
What's the impact on the budget if we reduced our?
Each mill is about seventy-one, little or seventy-one thousand.
Which was seventy-six thousand.
It was seventy-six last year, seventy-one this year.
Well, then the thing is, is if you're okay with that, I mean, and that's fine, but. Later on next year, when I'm sitting out there watching this council, I don't wanna hear any. Belly aching about not having any money to go through and do stuff, you know, that we're currently doing. Because if you don't, if you're not bringing the money in, you're gonna be cutting services at some point, if you're not bringing that in. And I'm not gonna be sitting out there, maybe playing golf, so. But.
But you'll be watching the videos, right?
Every week.
Yeah, well, what that means dollar wise, i- if we went four more mills, uh, on the, in the cupboard. Would be, uh, roughly, uh, two hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Well, what could, what's get, what are we not spending that two hundred and eighty-four thousand on?
I think really what happens, the question is, do you reduce your reserve below the twenty percent? And so I, you know, and I, and I've thought about this quite a bit. You know, and, and I think back, you know, the twenty percent reserve limit. I go back, as Mayor Fisher put that into place, when she became mayor, the reserves were extremely low. So they, the twenty percent target was a good target to get to, when I became mayor, it was fortunate, we were at twenty percent. We're pretty close, weren't we, at twenty percent right there?
Yeah, we've gone down, you know, several times, uh, in the last thirteen years, you know, to around twelve percent, fourteen percent. And we're able to climb back out of it.
But I think one of the things that we looked at through the budgeting process. You know, we were able to climb back out of it in the past, we knew, we, we used it old school station, we, I mean, there are some very specific things. That those reserves came into use that saved the taxpayers. And, and when I say that, because old school station protected our bond rating. You lose your bond rating, your interest costs go up, that costs the taxpayers more, you do less with the same amount of money that you're collecting. So when I, I look at this, my biggest concern is, we cut it by that much, it reduces the reserves that much, if we can't make it up. Growth slows down, et cetera, you can't make that value back up, you're digging a hole. And if I remember right, Mister Russell, the, the projections we looked at earlier in the budgeting sessions. Five, ten years out, even just with the current, we're gonna be sucking a little bit of wind.
Yeah, we, you know, we, in that forecast and forecast, it's a model, model is what a model is, um. You know, you rely on cash carryovers on an annual basis to balance it, and it's no different this year. And this goes back five years when we added in some emergency respond personnel in advance of the levy, just cause we were at that stage where we just had to. Knew we were gonna take a hit in the annual revenues versus expenditures appropriation. Uh, no doubt about it, i- i- if you lower that amount and you still try and hit that policy. Um. Uh, you, you're just either, you look at it from a compounding interest perspective, it just takes that much longer to try and climb yourselves back up. And. You know, that's why, that policy, it goes both ways in terms of those things. One, you know, we don't keep the taxation to ke- keep it there, it keeps it at that twenty percent. Uh, Mister Fisher, you'd mentioned, well, by law, you can do it at a higher rate, well, council's already determined, well, we wanna keep it at the twenty percent. And have that perspective and it goes above that, then you, you, you look at that lowering of taxes. Uh, there's no doubt, we could have put it all towards a reserve for capital and used it into the future for that. Uh, I, I would highly recommend not to reduce your reserve amount. Because that's hard to climb back up from, um, our, our budget team. Has several months of struggles, we're, we're trying to go through that in, create where it's at. To get up, up to that twenty percent, to then say, okay, now how do we prioritize these different things? Cause there's things that, you know, we've discussed during the budget workshops that are not in this budget. Because we wouldn't be able to hit some of those thresholds that council discussed about always wanting to be a little bit below the cap. And wanting to keep that twenty percent, so it's not like, um. It's a free and clear point of, well, yeah, now we got everything that is necessary, so let's go ahead and reduce. That's not the case, and we've deferred some of the projects in various departments to present the budget where it's at. And that's why we have a policy to try and hit that twenty percent, to give a- all parties involved an understanding of what we're trying to meet. So, I definitely recommend you try and keep that twenty percent reserve amount, just cause it is hard to climb out of.
And when we talk about this. These few mills, I mean, property ta- annual property tax on, on the property without the mills. Is. Very low.
Well, yeah, and, uh, you know, I, I, that also goes to, you know, what is the purpose? Because I've already talked about the class four residential is, is decreasing significantly as more than likely what, why our taxable value is. Drop five thousand dollars per mill, probably that class four residential, so there's gonna be a decrease in residential property taxes. By that shift in state law, so it, then it just becomes, okay, what are we trying to achieve? By reducing the millage.
It seems more like a symbolic act based on what we're forced into by the state legislature. I just, I, I, yeah, I just, I don't really see the point of, of doing it.
I guess I'm a little desensitized to, um, the reduction of the reserve amount. Uh, it was only a few years ago that we wanted to finish up the Parkline Trail and we had about a million. That we, uh, put toward that, um, i- out of our reserve. Which didn't end up actually coming out of our reserve because we had some money later on that we found that we could apply there. Um, like end, end of year funds that, that we ran into, so it wasn't quite that much, but we did dig ourselves out of that pretty quickly.
Well, you, and we had multiple things going on in that time period, um, as related to, um, ARPA funds?
Yeah.
That were coming through, CARES funds?
Yep.
That by state law definition were general fund monies, you know, basically as it came out, because they were all impacted what we had. So coincidentally, we had other things that helped us get back out of there, cause we did appropriate from the reserve, almost a million dollars out of it. We were able to climb out that much quicker simply because of circumstantial issues and availability of some of those funds that. Are not gonna be there next year, not gonna be there the year after.
And, and, you know, I guess part of my big reason for doing this is I'm trying to stay away from emulating. Um, cities around Montana that I don't want to replicate, I, I don't wanna be like them. Um, I wanna be more fiscally responsible, um, I think this is a good area for that in, in the, in the state. Um, but, you know, I, I understand your arguments, I, 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 I'm not gonna support this at the current bill levy. But, uh, you know, I'm only one vote out of nine.
I found three mills.
You found three? I, I have some ideas too, but go ahead.
Four, ten, one hundred, strike page seven out of the general fund. What's, what's on page seven? Now, I, I mean, Mister Dowd, I get, the other side though is this council, I mean, staff, I mean, everybody, we are very conservative. Trying to manage this budget, we're not seeing a budget bloated with different things coming in that don't belong in city government. We're trying to get by just providing the things that have to be provided in city government. We're not adding services, we're not adding departments, we're not adding programs, we're maintaining the same programs we had the prior year. The state is making it tougher for us to do it, and dare I say, growth didn't come in as much as we'd hoped. Which, there's been a slowdown.
I, I, and I'm not, I'm not sad about that part, I mean, that, tha- tha- the growth is gonna happen naturally, I don't wanna interfere with, uh, how that happens. Um, I do know that it's ridiculous that the state can overtax you and then. Re- hold on to that money while it's growing interest and then give it back to you later on after taking out their administrative fees, so they're laundering your money for you up at the state level. But we don't have the option here to do anything near that, we, we have to, we have hard limits that are set.
We don't launder money.
What's that?
We don't launder money.
Well, the state does, but we don't, exactly, um, so I, I'm trying to figure out. You know, you know, how to give, the, the taxpayers are going to have a higher tax bill this year. Has nothing to do with any of this, has to do with the value of your dollar, has been decreased significantly, so. Your tax bill is gonna be higher than it was before, even if you're part of this group that went down a little bit. Um, just because the value of the dollar is less, and you know, I'm, I'm a little bit worried that with other. Levies that we're gonna have to make fit into state law, that we're gonna just continue to get this limited, limited, limited budget. And try to figure out, hey, how do we not, um, you know, look like we're greedy and. Uh, tax every mill we can possibly tax, so I do, I do appreciate that we're at least one down, right? Uh, but I would sure love to see it be more, I'd like to give people as much of a tax break as we can, as we can. But we need to enter into this next year with our budget session, with this in mind, that it's gonna go down again, we're gonna be in this crunch again. So what happens to our budget, we, I mean, and we can plan for it then, we didn't know what was gonna happen this budget season. Because they had just finished up the legislative session when we started into our, our, our tax dis- I mean, our, uh. Budget discussions here, so we'll, we'll have a better understanding next year, I, I just, you know, I, I'm frustrated with where we're at right now.
Okay, any other discussion, we had a motion, right? Have a roll call vote?
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunnally?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
No.
Counselor Fisher?
No.
Mayor Johnson?
Oh, aye. Okay, resolution sixty-two eighty-one, the budget, annual appropriations, this resolution sets the annual appropriations for the city of Kalispell. For fiscal year twenty twenty-six, Mister Russell?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, uh, as identified, this is the appropriations aspect that authorizes the expenditure items, uh, for the next year's budget. Across all funds, uh, highlighted some of the changes, uh, and some of them were due to the, uh, search for the new, uh, city manager. Um, that was added in as an increase, I've talked a little bit about the, uh, leave payout, uh, the definite change. Within the pre- from the previous budget, but also any other, you know, minor shifts that we do see throughout there that are outlined in there. But this is the, uh, appropriations act that allows us to move forward with the fiscal year twenty-six budget. So happy to answer any questions council may have.
Questions for staff? Any public comment on sixty-two eighty-one, the budget? Mister Graham?
Thank you, Your Honor, I move resolution number six-two-eight-one, resolution setting the annual appropriations for the city of Kalispell, Montana. For special revenue funds, debt service funds, capital project funds and proprietary enterprise funds as set forth. In the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget adopted by the city council.
Second.
Second, thank you, Ms. Carlson, discussion on the motion? Mister Hunter?
Thank you, Your Honor, um, I think the, uh. Budget, budget sit- situation is clear and our discussion kind of highlighted this, but, uh, I know we talked during the, uh, preliminary budget. About finding funding for sidewalks, uh, cause we chose not to do the levy and just, um. Check, uh, before we vote on it, if anybody came up with, uh. Funding opportunities in, in the budget for sidewalks.
I found two hundred and ten thousand dollars. What page again?
Is that a motion?
Anyone want sidewalks? Who wants healthcare, who wants sidewalks?
That's not, that's not just.
No, it's not just, no, I'm just talking, it's the whole, that's the whole enchilada. But, just saying, like I said, we go through this. And it's very tight all the way through, and I know staff has a lot of things that they, they don't even ask for that we know we need. Because they understand where we are with the numbers. And, and I get, I, so that's where I look at this group and I say, I know one spot where we could have an impact. Without the impact of staff, but we could if we really wanted to, so I just. Just that item that's out there. Any other discussion?
I don't think it was very clear about what you were exactly talking about there. Um, and I just want to point out specifically that that was. Healthcare provided to the council itself.
No, that, that's less than a mill.
That's less than?
No, the three mills is all of the council budget.
Okay, gotcha.
But. Just, just over one and a half is compensation insurance for council. That, you know, so you kind of look through the budget and you go, you get to this point. And as a business owner, you get to that point going. When I build my budget, I have to pay my employees, I have to pay for this, I have to keep the business going. This is what the business owner does. I've been in those shoes so many times where you go, okay, wow, I guess I earn less money this year. All I'm saying is. There's a quick source of money if you want it there. Looking through the other budgets, I combed through it. I mean, you can nickel dime things here and there, Mr. Hunter, but to find anything substantive, substantial enough. I wasn't finding it.
So no five hundred dollars a month, no healthcare, no travel for council, zap it out.
Let's do it. We're about a hundred and twenty grand roughly in that range, just saying.
Put it towards sidewalks?
Aren't you advocating for an increase?
I was, my dad. Were these tight? The state messing with us?
I'd be up for it.
I just lob stuff out there. This is where I see where I go through the numbers. Okay, I'm gonna do a one, two, three, going, going, gone on the opportunity. One, two, three. Any other discussion? Can I have a roll call vote?
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
No. Just as a point for people to ask, why did he vote no? Motion passed. Resolution sixty-two eighty-two, storm sewer maintenance district assessment. This resolution considers the storm sewer maintenance assessment and sets the levy for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Mr. Russell, presentation.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, and now we're getting to the uh special revenue fund components within our budget. So you'll see, we have it pass a resolution every year for each of those assessment districts and that's what we're starting out with. As you see in the budget memo from our finance director, no change uh in the assessment for the storm sewer maintenance district for this year.
Questions for staff? Public comment? Is there anybody online? No, oh, Kendi, anything to say?
No.
No, okay, alright. Motion. Mr. Hunter?
Move we adopt resolution number sixty-two eighty-two of resolution levying assessments for the cost of storm sewer maintenance for the fiscal year. Twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher, for the second. Any discussion on the motion? We need more money. I know there's a hundred and twenty grand. So you know, discussion, can have a roll call vote?
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. Next item, resolution sixty-two eighty-three, urban forestry maintenance district assessment. This resolution considers the urban forestry maintenance assessment and sets the levy for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Mr. Russell, we can still do this according to state law?
Yes, we can. Just very similar to, to the storm sewer assessment. Happy to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions for staff? Kendi? Okay. For council for a motion, Mr. Dowd?
I was against this when I first got on council. I was like, why are we spending this kind of money on trees? But.
You can put your hand on, you're speaking.
It is, it is, it is a, an amazing program that we run here. Um, and. When I learned that there wasn't a single tree in the city of Kalispell, other than in Woodland Park when, in nineteen oh three, and now look at it. Uh, this is a successful program, so.
That was a long motion.
He was prefacing, he's running for Mr. Hunter. I speak for five minutes and then I give you a quick.
So, Your Honor, I move resolution number sixty-two eighty-three, a resolution levying an assessment for the cost of urban forestry maintenance. In the city for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Second, thank you, Mr. Hunter. When I am done being mayor, they're gonna feel the brunt of all of this for me. Okay, any discussion, any more discussion on the motion? Anything more to be said over what he said in his prelude to the motion?
I was just, I was just wondering what Mr. Dowd felt about urban forestry.
I'll, I'll, I'll have it sometime at the end.
Okay. Mr. Dowd likes cutting down trees. Have a roll call vote?
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. Next item, resolution sixty-two eighty-four, light maintenance district assessment. This resolution levies the assessment for maintaining the street lighting in the city for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Until the legislature speaks, we still have the lights on.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, for the special lighting district, uh, the res- resolution before you again represents no change from previous year.
Okay. Questions for staff? Any public comment? Kendi, nothing? Okay. To council for a motion? Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move resolution number six-two-eight-four, a resolution levying an assessment for the cost of lighting the streets and alleys in the city. Special lighting district for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Secondly, Mr. Nunley, any discussion on the motion? That's how you do a motion, boom.
Ryan, it's your turn. Have a roll call vote?
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. Resolution sixty-two eighty-five, street maintenance district assessment. This resolution levies the assessment for maintaining the streets and avenues for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, um, as you probably remember, uh, this was one of those. Districts up for a lot of discussion this past year, um, back in two thousand twenty-four. Um, council passed a seven-year adjustment program, so this continues on with that program. We've identified the increases for each of those different classifications within the memorandum at uh, but the full uh. You know, work plan was identified as we went through that back in two thousand twenty-four. So happy to answer any questions council may have.
Mr. Russell, this includes snow plowing? In this assessment?
I believe that's where we'd have our snowplow come out of, the personnel.
Have we ever hired a consultant to see, make sure we're doing it right? Okay, alright. Any other questions for staff? Any public comment? Motion? Mr. Dowd, it's up to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move resolution number six-two-eight-five, a resolution levying an assessment for the cost. Of the special maintenance for the purpose of maintaining the streets and avenues of the city of Kalispell for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Second, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Any discussion on the motion? I, for one, love our street maintenance program, Mr. Dowd, as much as I love the forestry. Because I like driving on smooth streets. That are plowed.
Do you want the levy guy to talk about roads now?
Have a roll call vote?
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. Almost done, Mr. Nunley, trying to keep you awake.
Thanks.
Resolution sixty-two eighty-six, solid waste district assessment. This resolution levies the assessment for removing solid waste from the city streets and alleys for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, Mayor, again, and Council, again, we've identified, you know, the business plan for the solid waste management. Uh, it was a pretty extensive effort. Had a whole lot of outreach, took public comment. Council yourselves took a lot of time and a lot of meetings on that process. This represents the continuation of that resolution that was passed. Um, it identifies the memo itself, the different costs for the different factors uh that would be implemented with this resolution. So happy to answer any questions that council may have in relation to it.
Mr. Dowd, question?
Yeah, and can you remind me once again, I believe I remember the figure, but uh, how much was it for one of those side loader garbage trucks? Now?
Going to ask our director of public works if she has an idea on that?
Yep, and two years ago, how much did they cost?
Well, they've increased over the last five years. I, I think we started like at two fifty and then it went up to three fifty and then it went to four fifty, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, I, I can't believe how much a garbage truck costs. I, I need to do that, I guess, when I get. No, I, I need to drive one.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's my retirement plan, so, alright, thanks.
Could almost buy a Lamborghini for that, I think. Any other questions for staff? Any public comment? Motion? Mr. Dowd?
Your Honor, I move resolution number six-two-eight-six, a resolution to levy the cost of removal of garbage or other offensive matter from the streets. Alleys or on any, on any premises as a special tax against property. From which such matter was deposited and disposition thereof.
Second.
Second, thank you, Ms. Carlson. Other offensive matter.
Yeah.
How subjective, you always hate these subjective phrases, Mr. Dowd.
I, when, when I was reading it.
I'm gonna watch out.
You saw me trip up when I read that, exactly, because that is.
Works is gonna see me walking down the street, and guess what?
My list of offensive stuff is much smaller than.
Where's the mayor? Oh, he's mixed in with the other stuff, so we've got a good, a good dry number on that. Any other questions, any motion?
I have a.
Where are we at on this?
I'll, I'll speak to my motion. I, I just made the motion. Uh, did somebody second it?
Yeah, Ms. Carlson did.
Well, great. Uh, my only comment is a garbage truck is way cooler than a Lamborghini, so. Way cooler.
Yeah, but what about a Lamborghini with a side dump?
You could tell it's at the end of our budget.
Hey.
Right.
Have a roll call vote?
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. I hope twelve months from now when I tune in to watch, this is just as entertaining. Resolution sixty-two eighty-seven, tourism business improvement district appropriations. This resolution approves the annual appropriations for the TBID for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, we're back to the final two resolutions. Uh, we started off with the TBID and the BID in terms of their work plan. And overall budget, this finalizes that levy and the appropriations. And the first one up is the tourism business improvement district. So happy to any, answer any questions council may have.
Questions for staff? Public comment? Motion? Mr. Hunter?
Move that we adopt resolution number sixty-two eighty-seven, a resolution setting the annual appropriation for the tourism. Uh, business improvement district with the city of Kalispell, Montana as set forth in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget adopted by the city council.
Second.
Second, thank you, Mr. Nunley. Discussion on the motion? Roll call vote?
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. Next item, resolution sixty-two eighty-eight, downtown business improvement district appropriations. This resolution approves the annual appropriations of the BID for the fiscal year twenty-six. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, uh, your last resolution for today, uh, finalizing the levy and appropriations.
Thank you. Uh, last resolution for our budget uh for fiscal year twenty-six is. Uh, finalizing the tax levy assessment and appropriations for the business improvement district. Um, as you know, previously approved the, the budget work plan, this is that natural follow-up resolution for it. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Questions?
I, is this subject to the um mill levy valuation, whether you go by the, the value of the mill or the dollar amount? As well?
Would have had to go back and check and do a comparison of what that hit previous years, but it should be based on dollars.
Okay.
And then work back for mills, but. I, I'd have to go back and do a little bit more historical review of it.
You want to write a report for us so we can read it the next council session?
He doesn't have time.
Amy, do you have a quick answer for that?
No, it's basically about the, I mean, it, it is based off some value. But I would have to go back and check too. I mean, basically. The value of the mill that they're gonna get, their revenue income's gonna be about forty-eight thousand.
And you know, it's a different class.
Sure, I, I just didn't know what all was encompassing that crazy Senate bill.
Yeah, so we'd have to take, go back and take a little bit closer look at what's going on with that specific one.
Any other questions? Public comment? Motion?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move resolution number six-two-eight-eight, a resolution making the annual tax levy for the business improvement. Of Kalispell, Montana for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. And levying an assessment for the bid for fiscal twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
Motion second, Mr. Hunter? Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote?
Counselor Hunter?
Aye.
Counselor Nunley?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Graham?
Aye.
Counselor Dowd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye, motion carries. Uh, Mr. Russell, swan song.
Yeah, uh, Mayor and Council, one, as always, thank you for all the work on the budget. And I'd like to, you know, unpeel a layer back. Because a lot of serious discussion tonight, but in a lighthearted fashion, which in all reality, and I, I don't know. Everyone takes it the same way, and maybe just because I'm familiar with your understanding of where we're at and the budget process. That you're able to take the seriousness of things that are occurring with it, but you also know where our budget's at. And as a staff member, just an appreciation for the work that the council has done. Many of these items have been decided outside of work sessions in a June or a July. Series of work sessions that just lay the foundation for us to be able to put a budget together and to uh incorporate those different. Work plans and rate studies through that, so uh, to me, the conversation that's had tonight is just a reflection of all that work that is. Previously put into it. So just a level of appreciation related to that. Um, outside of that, uh, many things, uh, I, I could say to each and every one of you, and appreciation. For my time here, but just a global, thank you. I've just appreciated my time here so much. Thank you. And I, I'll defer to interim city manager Jared Nygren for anything we have upcoming.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, no Monday off. Do have a work session next week. We got a request from the school district for some short-term parking by Peterson. Is getting into the school year. There's been some changes in that neighborhood in regards to the Samaritan House and how. Typically, some of the, the parents and things that students drop off for short-term parking have historically been able to park a lot, but they are doing an infill development with the multifamily. So there's some changing dynamics there that will need to um have some parking changes on Second Street. Or proposed parking changes that we'll be presenting to you, uh, that would require some code changes in regards to short-term parking. So public works will be presenting next week and that's it. Uh, that would require some code changes in regards to short-term parking. So Public Works will be presenting next week, and that's it.
Anything from council? Mr. Dowd?
Thank you, your honor. Uh, so, yeah, we did have a lighthearted, uh, meeting tonight. This is the most important city council meeting of the year, every year. And, once again, it is probably the lightest attended meeting that we have of the year, unfortunately. Everything we've talked about tonight, the city council has gone over line item by line item. And the staff here does an amazing job at being as, uh, you know, tight, tightening their belt as much as they can to get what they need to, to, to run the city without spending more of your tax dollars. So I really appreciate that. Um, I just wish that more people would participate in the budget process. It's the second most important thing that we do. The first is listen. The second is the budget. And it's, it's disheartening to me. I keep, uh, putting this out there, but I wish more people would be involved with the budget process. We'd love to hear more input, uh, at our work sessions on these. And the second thing is, I just hope that we can, through this process, find another unelected bureaucrat that is as good as Doug has been for the city. So I needed to throw that out one last time before you left, so bon voyage and good luck.
Mr. Fisher?
Just to thank you, to Mr. Russell and his thirteen years of service, um, Lakewood was wise in choosing you, and I wish you and your family the best of luck.
Yeah, I also want to thank you for your service to the community and good luck in your next endeavors in Washington. And, uh, I hope I still receive music recommendations from you.
Don't send them to me. Don't send the music recommendations. Um, yeah, Doug, it, twelve years being on the council, and when you, you know, when you first came on, it was prior to me getting on the council, but thinking back over the, the process of how things evolved through the last twelve years, everything got easier and, and more streamlined, like the budget got just better and better, it seemed like every year after. Um, and, uh, I, I think probably one of the, the things that you've provided for the council and for staff is just a solid foundation that's still gonna be here. The staff, the, the ability to bring staff members in and fill in for you while you're gone, and, you know, testament to, to Jared being interim, um, you know, manager. Your, um, the policies that we've gone and created over the last twelve years have only made things better so that, you know, in your absence, when you're gone, whoever picks up, um, and runs at that final, that final hiring, I, I mean, it's gonna be a lot easier for them to do that, so. And, and I count myself fortunate for having been able to be on the council the full time that you were here as a city manager. So, good luck in Lakewood, and I'm sure we'll be seeing you down the road.
Well, thank you for everything you have done. It's, it has been a great time getting to know you more and, and everything. And I, you are gonna be missed, and you've been a great leader, and I think that Lakewood is very lucky to, to have you coming over there. You'll be missed. But come on back for a concert here and there.
Well, Doug, I agree with everything that's been said, except by, my first year on council, I remember we had lunch, and I didn't know what an impact fee was or what a mill was, and you were so patient and taught me a lot, so I thank you for that. So all these twelve years, thanks for putting up with all my questions. So, best of luck. I will look you up when I go to Seattle and to see my son. So, that would be fun, so, but thank you.
Oh, man, where do I start? Well, actually, I'm gonna start because it's a red letter day. Note this date, Mr. Nygren, because this is a day my butt dials on Saturday morning at six AM, my text messages Sunday at ten o'clock, all the different times I'd reach out, either accidentally or intentionally, but I always return the call. I think your commitment to the city, to the profession, to this council, and to your staff is a lesson and example that I hope the next city manager to Kalispell can bring and carry that torch on. Because you have made things easier, we've streamed, as, as Mr. Graham said, you've streamlined things, you've made things, gotten things to the point that any person in the city of Kalispell can understand it, if we sit down and go through it. And I think we've accomplished this, and it hasn't always just been easy things. Back to the times of COVID, the dark times, because we've had these rougher patches that were thrown at us. And I almost watched him get citizen arrested. I mean, my God, what city manager has been arrested by a citizen? I don't know. But that was close. Fortunately, that man's now in jail. But anyway, um, it's been an honor serving as mayor with you as the city manager, and I just want to wish you the best of luck. And I just want to know, what night are the council meetings in Lakewood?
Same, same night, Monday.
Monday night?
Yeah.
Chad, I know what we're doing Monday nights, at least a couple out of the year, so don't be shocked if you see a couple guys sitting in the back corner getting up to give public comment about things that we have no idea about. But we're gonna get up and talk about things that you will know near and dear, from snow plowing to all kinds of different things. You are gonna catch at least a visit from Chad and I on a Monday night, because next year, starting January one, he and I won't need to be here. So, anyway, but in all seriousness, it's been an honor serving with you, and we appreciate everything you've done. And we're gonna miss you. So please, come back. This is still home. No, you still have a house here. Incidentally, it's a long-term rental, so you're okay. The state can't screw you that way. But, I, I, you know, I think we've worked at it, and maybe you've got that special deal too, I'm not sure. But anyway, um, it's been, it's, it's been a great time. That said, Mr. Nygren, look forward to working with you over the next few months as we go through this process. You have all my faith, because I've watched you working under Doug, working with staff, and I think you have the whole faith of the council, that you are a worthy, a worthy replacement to sit in this chair at my right hand, and I look forward to serving the next hundred and thirty-eight days with you. I think it's a hundred and thirty-eight days now. So, but anyway, look forward to that, and, uh, you have our full faith and confidence. So, with that, we're adjourned.